Welcome to Athens City Council. It's Tuesday, January 19th, 2021, and we are in regular session tonight. Our first item of business is establishing a quorum, and all members of council are present. Next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held on December 21st. We can have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Okay, by Councilmember Claude Felter and seconded by Councilmember Kotzis. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 O, nay. Okay, the minutes have been approved. Next, we have communications. I do have five items tonight: one report, two letters, two liquor permit applications. The first one is a report from Acting Service Safety Director, Tom Pyle, and this is a detailed revenue of transactions and expenses for the law enforcement trust fund and drug fund expenses. And this is required by the Ohio Revised Code, and so he had submitted it to us. And we had $132... $185.44 in revenues coming in. We also then had expenses, and the expenses were mainly for computers. The other items were body cameras, and the other ones, expenses, were transitions to nine-millimeter weapons. So those expenses all totaled $24,905.70. I did ask a few questions because of the nine-millimeter weapons and my just not having background in it. I can affirm for you that the Athens Police Department has no military-grade hardware. Two years ago, this transition is because that two years ago, the council approved moving towards the nine-millimeter away from the 40 caliber. Our 40 caliber equipment was five to 15 years old, and the ammunition costs were much more expensive. And at the same time, that transition was tied to the purchase of the body-worn cameras. And those, I asked about the cameras then, and he said that those body-worn cameras automatically start when a sidearm is drawn. They also stop at when the taser might be deployed and also when red lights and sirens are on in the cruisers. So I think that gives us a good background. The other thing I wanted to refer to is the Frequently Asked Questions document that Councilmember Fall and Chief Acting Service Safety Director, Tom Pyle, worked on. And that answers a lot of other questions, and I was actually able to refer to that when I was asking myself my own questions about this report. So thanks again for that. The letters that we have, one of them we received from Mr. David Wakefield, and he asked that this be read to council members. I believe you have also seen a copy of this in your email. And he writes to City Council that he's witnessing a flagrant disregard for the city's mask ordinance in most of the larger businesses in Athens, enabled in many cases by a management that has the policy of not enforcing it in any way. Lowe's, Tractor Supply, Walmart, Menards, and even Kroger, where most of the city buys its food. Kroger does have a woman at the door encouraging mask wearing, but they do not stop perpetrators, and I have seen many maskless people there. Columbus has the same size chain stores with the same number of employees, but they have a security guard at the door who simply does not allow anyone in without a face mask. It's not that difficult to enforce, given the political will. In Columbus, after a month or two, people have learned to behave themselves, and the security guards are quite often no longer needed. And Mr. Wakefield goes on to say, "I know several people with severely compromised immune systems that are prohibited their right to shop in these stores because of the belligerent, inconsiderate behavior of a few that is going unchecked. I think that we, as a small town, should be able to take better care of all of our citizens. The numbers are rising." And that's signed, Mr. David Wakefield. And I did direct him to the complaint form that's available in the Ohio Department of Health and the Athens City County Health Department, and he has filed complaints at both of those sites. So thank you, Mr. Wakefield, for writing. And related to that, we have received a communication also from our HR Director at the city announcing that there are, as related to COVID, there are vaccines available for the week of January, and you can register. And the week of January 19th, that's this week, is for 80-plus. The week of January 25th is for 75 years and older. Excuse me, the week of February 1 is for those age 70 and older, and the week of February 8th is for those 65 and older. And then the vaccines will work on down to the rest of the population. Councilmember Claude Felter?
Did the HR Director give you any idea how many vaccine doses would be available?
I've heard from the county health department that I think we will have 1,000 available.
For a week?
No, well, 1,000 available right now for those 80-plus. And we do have, I believe, 4,400 aged 80... I think, I'm not sure. I shouldn't quote that number, but we have some vaccines available. We have more citizens than we have vaccines, so they're urging people to register.
Okay, thank you.
From places. And a letter from Mr. Spaforth, who said, writes to council members that he had learned something about the city utilities office. On December 15th, 2020, he wrote to Kim at the city utilities department and enclosed his check of $25 to purchase 10 yellow stickers for an extra can of garbage. And he enclosed the letter to council members. And Kim responded and said the yellow stickers are no longer used and to put out an extra garbage can for the city pickup. But that price of that extra garbage can is $5. And Mr. Spaforth said, "This is 100% rise in the price for an extra garbage can for city pickup. And this sounds like fraud," is what Mr. Spaforth said. "And the city is upping its extra garbage can price for pickup. Therefore, council member, who is responsible for city utilities legislation, reinstate the yellow sticker system as before and charge the former price of $2.50 for extra can to be picked up." And that's signed by Mr. Spaforth. And we did receive a note back from Mr. Riggs about the, and Mr. Chickie at the city, detailing some of the average rate increases, which were about 50%, but in this one case, yes, the cost for that extra can has gone up 100%. And in fact, unfortunately, the yellow sticker program was discontinued because the revenue coming in for that was not paying for the cost of the stickers and to administer it. So, and we thank Mr. Spaforth for writing to us about that.
President Nisley, there is a comment in the chat section right now about vaccines?
Okay. And I believe that Mr. Ziff writes in that is there a plan to set aside vaccines for those working in essential services, such as the service industry and bartenders and servers and baristas and grocery store workers? And I think that the first round, there were 500 vaccines made available for essential services workers, and of which Mr. Pepper from the Cat City County Health Department reported that 450 of those were immediately distributed. And Councilmember Smedley, yes? Do you have a comment?
Thank you, President Nisley. I just wanted to chime in and say, those questions are best directed to the health department, but I do know that the phasing and eligibility is determined at the state level. And so while there is a lot of interest in getting the vaccine from all sorts of demographics, we are expected to follow the state phasing-in plan for the vaccine distribution, which is led by the health department.
Thank you, Councilmember Smedley. Excellent point. Yep, we're following the directives of the state. Last two items are liquor permit applications. One is from D&amp;J Athens LLC, and this is for a D3A permit, and this would extend the issued permit privileges to 2:30 in the morning. And we have received this, and if we wanted to make a comment, responses would have to be filed by February 16th. The other liquor permit application arrived a week earlier, and so responses, if we chose to make any, would have to come in to the Division of Liquor Control from our offices by February 8th. And this particular application is for the El Tenempo Mexican Grill at 21 South Court. And it's a transfer from the Starting Gates LLC, 120 West Union, to the Mexican Grill at 21 South Court. And the designation says it's for safekeeping. It is a D1 application, so that would be beer only on premises consumption or in sealed containers for carryout. And those are my communications. And do council members have any other communications? Councilmember Grace?
Thank you, President Nisley. I wanted to just sort of expound or expand on the COVID conversation this evening. And this is pertaining to a communication that I and I believe other members of council may have received today that was in contrast to the letter read previously by President Nisley, which was asking for increased enforcement of the mask ordinance. There was a letter requesting that, or asking when the city would be withdrawing or canceling the mask ordinance. And so I think there are just a few important facts to remind the public of today or whenever viewers may decide to watch this. And one is that regardless of what the city does in terms of our local mask ordinance, there is a statewide mask mandate that is in effect and will remain in effect, I believe, for some time. And so penalties for violation of the statewide mandate are actually harsher than penalties for violation of the local ordinance could be. So I want to just remind viewers that it's not just within the city of Athens that masks are mandated. This is a statewide mandate for when individuals go into public spaces. There is... Well, COVID-19 is predominantly transmitted via respiratory droplets and that are generated when we talk, breathe, sing, cough, sneeze. And multi-layer cloth masks have been shown to block upwards of 80% of those droplets. We know, the science is solid, that masks block, slow, decrease the transmission of the SARS-CoV-19 virus. And that is why it's really important that we continue to abide by both the local and statewide mask mandate. Because today, nationally, as a country, we surpassed 400,000 deaths due to COVID. There is a death in this country every few seconds. It is the leading cause of death in this country above cancer, heart disease, cardiovascular disease. This is a really serious disease that is killing Americans every day, every minute, several every minute. And the one thing that we know that we, as everyday, normal individuals can do to help reduce the spread of this disease is to wear a mask, as well as maintaining distancing, hand washing, avoiding crowded locations and groups of people. Most, 100,000 of that 400,000 deaths, 100,000 of them happened in the past five weeks. The number of cases reported daily, both locally and statewide and nationally, is higher now than it has ever been in this country. And there is hope. There's hope, there are vaccines, and we wish that there were more. And I believe there are many people who are dedicated and really working hard to improve access to the vaccines. But we need to hang on a little longer and keep wearing our masks because it's really important. And I just wanted to put out there that this is where we are. 400,000 deaths in this country. And if wearing a mask, for me, if I reduce the spread, save even one person from dying of COVID because I wear a mask for a year every time I go out, that is more than worth it. And I hope that my fellow Athenians feel the same.
Thanks for the additional information, Councilmember Grace. Okay. And do we have communications then from Mayor... We'll take Mayor Patterson first because I know the Law Director has an annual report for us tonight. Mayor Patterson?
Thank you, President Nisley. I was always waiting for council members to go before me, so you caught me off guard. I want to kind of further expound on the vaccine here in Athens County. Just before council tonight, got off the phone with Jack Pepper. Couple things I want to share. Number one, he expressed again his appreciation for the city and the county jointly coming in to purchase, to allow them to purchase three deep freezers from Sterling Ultracold, and wanted me to tell council, again, thank council for that action as well as to let all of you know that, and the city to know, that those freezers have been heavily, heavily used. So through his words, he wanted to express gratitude and demonstrate a return on the investment. And in reality, as you're all aware, it was using a portion of our CARES Act funding, which was perfect to do this. So the other thing is that Thursday and Friday of this week, they will be vaccinating approximately 800 individuals, which is great news. About 240-ish of those are follow-up vaccines, so it's individuals getting their second dose. And then well over 500 will be getting their first vaccination. So that's wonderful news as well, which fits nicely with what everyone was talking about with the vaccine. Along those same lines, just as a reminder, and President Nisley, I believe you mentioned this, but it's good just kind of saying this again and again so people better understand. You know, this week, as we're all aware, individuals 80-plus are getting the vaccine, are eligible the week of the 25th, so next Monday. Ohioans aged 75 or older, along with individuals with severe congenital disabilities, they will be eligible or developmental disorders, they are eligible to receive the vaccine. February 1st, Ohioans aged 70 or older and employees in the K through 12 school systems who wish to remain or return to in-person or hybrid teaching, they'll be eligible. And then February 8th, individuals aged 65-plus. There are eight different pharmacies throughout our county that will be administering the vaccine. I'm not going to go through the whole list. I believe I sent this to Scott Thompson and Ryan Schwartzoff to where this could be posted on the city's website. But for people who are interested, I urge you to look at that list and contact the pharmacy closest to you to see about getting that vaccine. I also want to give council an update. Yes?
Just a follow-up question right there. Just to be clear for the public. So if someone is interested in getting one of those shots, say, someone who's 80-plus this week, should they call one of those pharmacies directly? Or should they call the Athens City County Health Department?
They can contact the pharmacies directly. I know that if you were to go to, say, the Shriver's Pharmacy on West Union, there is a form that someone has to fill out to see if you do qualify because they are working very closely with what the guidance is from ODH in terms of administering the vaccines. I would contact the pharmacies directly.
Thank you.
And the health department is also administering, so you can fill out a form. So literally, I know it's confusing, but people are registering at multiple places and calling, and whoever will take you first, quite frankly, is what people are doing, the reality of it right now. So, thanks. Sorry, didn't mean to... Go on, Mayor Patterson.
I understand. I mean, this is so vitally important, and I really respect and appreciate... I just need to say this. Member Grace's comments earlier. You know, I have zero intent to rescind or request council to rescind the phase covering ordinance. So council, just know that from me to you and the public. I do want to give an update real quick on the Stimson Avenue project because it is desperately in need of repair. It is slated to be construction happening. It's happening right now, and it will run through the month of October of this year. But Phase 1, pre-Phase B is what it's called, is underway now, and it is to basically replace the, some of the underground infrastructure, the sewer lines, the sewer main through that area. That's what people have experienced with the cutting up of the concrete and replacing it with asphalt at the end of the day after they've put new sewer, sanitary sewer in. That'll wrap up this month. January 29th is the projected closeout date of that work. And then it'll immediately roll into February 1 through mid-July, which will be the north side of the street. So it'll be Stimson Avenue, the north half. So this is the half that is next to where Athens Bicycle Shop was and where KFC is. It'll be that side first. There will always be traffic maintained, but it is only going to be in one direction. It's going to be westbound, coming off of the Stimson Bridge through the Roundabout. The detour will be on East State Street for eastbound. Or I encourage people who know the city of Athens well, find a different route to take to get, you know, in the direction that you want to go. Mid-July through October of 2021 will be the south half of the street, so the Ambassador Cleaner's side of the street. So there you have it. Please bear in mind, and I say that with every project that takes place here in the city of Athens, a lot is dependent on that. That schedule is often dependent on weather. We have wet or very adverse weather conditions in the winter or into the summer, the rainy monsoon season with climate change. Be prepared that construction schedule can slip. So I just, I need to say that loud and often. So, but I do want council and the viewing audience to have that update on that construction and what to expect. We had a wonderful new event that we're doing. Small, socially distanced, but it is, the fire department is now doing pinning ceremonies for firefighters that have gone through probation and are now full-fledged firefighters. So we had a pinning ceremony for Austin Smith last week. And then we had a pinning ceremony this evening for Adam Kessler, our two newest additions to the Athens Fire Department. So if you see them out and about, congratulate them for making it through their probation and being pinned with their, now as full-time permanent firefighters for the city of Athens. The last thing I want to share with council, I know this is a lot, so bear with me, is I had a meeting earlier today with the Deputy Service Safety Director and individuals down at the utility billing office. You know, in accordance with the governor's orders as of March 9th, with the passage of HB 197, on March 27th of 2020, the city of Athens suspended all water shut-offs as part of the ensuing water challenges during the pandemic. The moratorium on the water shut-offs ended December 1st of 2020, although the city has continued to maintain the moratorium and not shutting off the water supply to individuals. We worked with HAPCAP, as council is well aware, to create a utility relief grant to which they were able to get a fair amount of money to people who qualified for the utility relief fund. But at this point in time, we currently have 350 delinquent accounts in the city. The amount of that delinquency in total, which is people who have been delinquent 30 days or more, The city clearly does not wish to shut off anybody's water for those that are in arrears, but we've got to start using the tools that we have available to get people to pay on their delinquent bills. The city's billing office, utility billing office, will continue to work with people that truly are being challenged by the COVID-19 pandemic in that they can work out payment plans, they can work out a number of different things to help people get through these difficult times. But starting in February, February 4th is the next round of releasing notices. There will be people who are, have been delinquent for 30 days or more receiving disconnect notices from the city of Athens Utility Billing Office as we go forward. But again, if you're having troubles with your utility bill because of the pandemic, please go down to the utility billing, call them, email them. They are more than willing to work with you to come up with a payment plan to give you some assistance and relief to get through. But when we're looking at, you know, well over $150,000 deficit under your water utility accounts, we're at the point where we finally do need to start sending out notices. So council, you will be hearing more in the future, I'm sure. But, Member Smedley, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that update. I have a few, if you don't mind. If we can bounce back a little bit. Could you remind the public, if you know this off the top of your head, how much of that grant we had available to folks who were delinquent? And if you know, again, off the top of your head, how much was utilized? And then I have a few additional questions.
I do. What was granted to HAPCAP to administer for the utility relief program was $75,000. The amount that was used, Member Smedley, if my memory serves me correctly, was roughly 11,000 of that 75,000, give or take, don't hold me that. I know that there were, again, approximately 11 individuals who took advantage of that assistance program through HAPCAP. But there was a number. We had anticipated seeing a lot more people take advantage of that program, and we really did not see that. The same holds true for the rent/mortgage relief program. Again, we saw a number of people take advantage, but it wasn't what we anticipated. I can get you firm numbers, Eric Smedley, because there was a fair amount of people who did, again, took advantage of or took use of the mortgage/rent relief as well. So I might be confusing those numbers in terms of the actual amounts, but it was less than we had truly anticipated being able to get out the door. There are still, there is still funding available through HAPCAP, as I understand it, with programs that they have continued on, just not with what was the CARES Act money. Because they had to send any unused money back to the city by the end of December because that was part of the stipulation at that point in time with the CARES Act money and how it was to be used. Clearly, that goalpost moved again to where people who have CARES Act money, it doesn't have to, well, it needs to be spent by the end of December of this year.
So then my next question, I appreciate that. Thank you. My next question then was, do we have the flexibility to reserve some of those funds again for the same purpose for individuals who are struggling?
Unfortunately, no, because we did sit there and allocate all of our money because, again, we were living under the deadline of having to have that money accounted for and expensed by the end of December. And it wasn't until near the end of December that that timetable moved once again. And we'd already taken action, and so there isn't money. Now, if we were to receive money in the future under the new administration at the federal level, that would be wonderful. We will certainly explore that because I would hope that the timeline would be reasonable in terms of any municipality being able to appropriately use those funding. But that's kind of a way... But that's, that's kind of a wait-and-see issue at this point in time.
I appreciate that. And I understand you guys are dealing with eligibility area, criteria that are changing frequently, timelines that are changing frequently, allotments that are coming in unexpected. So you're managed, having to manage a lot under a short, very short period of time. And given, and given all that, I appreciate the administration continuing to work with people, given the fact that we don't currently have CARES Act funding that would help even in our challenging budget times. Thank you.
You're welcome, Member Smedley. Member Claude Felder?
I was just wondering, for any people who are really in need, who have these delinquent water utility accounts, is it possible that they could contact HAPCAP and receive money from a different source to help them get out of that financial hole?
I, I don't know. I would, I just would just encourage people to go and contact HAPCAP to find out what programs are still ongoing at this point in time. I would go directly to HAPCAP.
Is it conceivable that that information could be shared in the, the letters that go out to people whose accounts are delinquent? In case they don't know that?
I suppose that's a possibility. We could look into that to see if we can add that to the, the notice.
Thank you.
I do have two last items, or three last items, and I'll be quick. Number one, Monday, this coming Monday, the 25th, from 5:30 to roughly 6:45, I will, I, I and my staff will be presenting on the state of the city, making a state of the city address. I would encourage counsel to, to tune into that Zoom meeting if you so choose to, or the public. We will be announcing, providing more information on that state of the city address. Again, that's 5:30 to 6:45, just prior to City Council's January 25th meeting, Monday evening. So I will probably be very tired that night, counsel, so be kind to me. And then the, two last things. I was just, I just received notice from the National League of Cities that I have been appointed to the 2020, 2021 Information Technology and Communications Federal Advocacy Committee. And as you're all well aware, I will certainly be fighting for rural broadband. So this gives me a platform from which to speak to the absolute need with our broadband deserts, not only in southeastern Ohio, but rural America, period. And then finally, I was just appointed, gave notice this afternoon that I've been appointed to the Board of Directors for the, let me get the, it's for the South Central Ohio Chapter for the American Red Cross. So I'm really excited and proud to serve in that capacity, in a, with a very important group and a well-recognized chapter, the South Central Chapter, Central Ohio Chapter is well-recognized across the state of Ohio and American Red Cross. So I'm excited to serve in that capacity. That's all I have, that was a lot, that's all I have for President Isley.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Patterson. Law Director Eliason, I understand you, and we've had access to your law director report, so.
All right, well, thank you. And I did provide that previously to the members of council. And I don't, I'm not going to go into it in detail, but one of my duties is to provide this annual report. And that's a duty that's set forth in the Ohio Revised Code. So just briefly, the law directors, the chief legal officer for the city of Athens, and that's pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code and Athens City Code. It is classified as a three-quarter time position. I supervise three full-time prosecutors and two full-time support people. That's part of my duty. My duties I outlined on pages four and five of just what the law director does. I thought I'd go into a little bit about the prosecutors. The prosecutors prosecute misdemeanor offenses in municipal court that occur in the city of Athens on Ohio University property. But also, and this is because the Ohio Revised Code says so, we have to prosecute misdemeanor offenses that occur in the unincorporated areas of the county. So that would be places like the Plains. It wouldn't include places like Nelsonville. So we prosecute those cases and the Athens County Commissioners by statute have to give us money to prosecute those. Doesn't say how much. And for about 10 years, they gave us $49,000 to prosecute the misdemeanors that occurred in the unincorporated areas of the county. Last year, well, actually, the end of 2019, I asked the commissioners for additional money. We did a year-long study of the cases and what percentage of the cases occur in the city of Ohio University property versus the unincorporated areas of the county. So I asked for an additional $21,000 and received that. And I'm happy to report that we received it for this coming year also, so that helps. It's kind of interesting to note, of all the misdemeanor cases that are filed, what percentage actually get prosecuted? So page one, I, and we cut off our statistics on December 21st, just to get this report together. There were 6,299 criminal traffic and OVA offenses in the municipal court. And in 2019, there were 7,789. So you could see from that number, there were less cases because of COVID. And about 78% of those cases pleaded arraignment, entered diversion, waived their court appearance, or prosecuted by another jurisdiction. So of those cases, we prosecuted 1,422 cases. And yes, municipal court was down as far as the number of cases prosecuted, but also our case load was down somewhat because there were less cases to prosecute. On page two, I told you the jurisdictions that, or the offices that we prosecute for, and it's the city police, code enforcement, city auditor, sheriff's department, state highway patrol, Ohio University Police Department, Department of Public Safety, which is liquor control, the dog warden, Department of Natural Resources, and if we're called upon, various state agencies. We've prosecuted cases for the Department of Agriculture in the past. As you know, I provide legal advice and represent the city in legal proceedings. I keep you apprised of what's going on in the civil cases. I serve on the negotiation team by appointment of the mayor. And I also serve as attorney for the Athens City School District, although because of the complex nature, I usually only handle matters involving property that they may have me appear before the Board of Revisions. Our annual budget in 2020 was $602,531. And again, we got $70,000 from commissioners and getting that again this year. I detailed what the prosecutors do and the cases. One note is that in addition to prosecuting these cases from after arraignment till restitution, last year, the office collected $19,721 in restitution. My duties are detailed on pages four and five, and I won't go into those. But one other thing I am required to do is keep you apprised of the civil cases that the city is involved in. And at the beginning of 2020, we had two cases pending. Three new cases were filed in 2020. We completed three, and that leaves us two pending at the end of 2020. So briefly, that's the report I'm required to give, although it's quite comprehensive. It's seven pages long. If anyone who's listening today has any questions, they can feel free to call me at the city, at the Office of the Law Director and City Prosecutor, and our number is readily available. And at this point, I would ask counsel if they have any questions. Member Crowell?
No question, just a comment. I'd like to commend you for the job that you do. It's always a pleasure to, to be perplexed about a legal issue and to contact your office and get on the, on the straight and narrow. And I appreciate also your advice, keeping us on the, again, the straight and narrow as we go throughout our regular proceedings. But anyway, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you for thanking me, but I much appreciate it. Counsel member Grace?
Thank you. I wanted to chime in with something along the same lines as Member Crowell, just that your, your work and guidance is certainly much appreciated by council members, but also to commend your prosecutors that are handling all the cases that while the case volume is down this year, it has certainly presented a lot of new challenges to effectively keep cases moving and provide good representation. And with everything happening mostly via Zoom in the courtroom, and that has, has certainly required some adaptation and learning how, how to do the job that they knew to do in a new way. And so I wanted to thank and commend you and your office for rolling with, with the pandemic and, and keeping, because it's with that volume of cases, they can't just stop processing. They have to, they have to keep moving. The court has to, has to keep moving things through. And I, I believe that Athens County has, has done an admirable job of that.
And I agree with that. We in fact have had one jury trial. And that was, I think, maybe late spring, early summer, somewhere in there, and that was handled in a socially-distanced manner. And it, it worked out. If, if we have a need for another jury trial, then I'm confident we can do that safely. But you're right, our prosecutors have been appearing via Zoom, as have the defense attorneys. And it's been a learning curve for everyone, but I think everyone has stepped up to the plate and really accepted the challenge and kept the cases moving. We can't just let those go. New cases come along every day. So we've kept them moving along in the interest of justice. Any other questions? It's a pleasure serving as your law director. So, thank you.
And thank you, Law Director Eliason. You, you've also aided us when, with instruction and also letting us know about seminars for the Ohio Sunshine Law. And that's something that we're always needing as council members to keep abreast of, and we appreciate that. So thanks. And all the other work, too. All right, we'll move on now to ordinances. We have mainly first reading ordinances. But tonight, seven of them will be requiring suspension because of grant, application deadlines or prior year bills or previous agreements or needing to run in concert with some other legislation. And then we have two resolutions that would normally have three readings, but because of a pending deadline, we'll also need to suspend those. So the first one is Ordinance 121. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an economic development revolving loan fund administration agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for zero, or 0121, because we need this agreement signed, completed, and in the hands of the Ohio Development Services Agency by February 1st.
Second?
Okay, second by Councilmember Claude Felder. All, so we have motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 0121.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reisner.
As discussed in committee, this is an administrative piece of the auditor's office and the mayor's office received the 2021-23 revolving loan fund administration agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency. And we need to have this signed and back to them to formalize that continued relationship so we don't lose any of the funds in the revolving loan fund. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval of Ordinance 121. And do we have any comments or questions from council members or administration? Any questions or comments from our participants tonight or attendees? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 221 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 7420, affirming the city of Athens will pick up the statutorily required contribution to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System for the employees of AFSMI Local 2403, pursuant to Internal Revenue Code Section 414H2 and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 0221, as this is, needs to be effective immediately.
And seconded by Councilmember Fall. We have motion and second for suspending. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 0221.
Seconded by Councilmember Grace.
And I think you're, the title that you read pretty much sums it up. This is important for our employees to approve today. Thank you.
Okay. And yeah, it does have January 19 effective date. So we have a motion and second. Do we have any comments or questions from council members or administration or our attendees who are attending tonight? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 321 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 14517, authorizing the city auditor to deposit 50% of the transient guest tax revenue into the tourism fund and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 0321.
Yeah, we have a second by Councilmember Cottis. And the reason, yeah, being that we are beginning to collect these funds as of January 1. Motion and second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The, the motion carries and the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve 0321.
And my camera is frozen, so whoever seconded, was that Councilmember Smedley?
Grace.
Grace, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and second. And you'll need to go ahead and explain briefly.
Sure, this is, you know, our standard administrative agreement with the transient guest tax. And this is the piece that the audit, that authorizes the auditor to deposit 50% of that tax in the calendar year of 20, well, actually, this is a three-year agreement from January 1, 2021 to December 31, 2023 into the tourism fund and then 50% into the general fund. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any questions from council members or administration or our attendees tonight? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Next is Ordinance 421. This is an ordinance establishing an expanded family and medical leave policy for city employees impacted by COVID-19 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 0421.
Second, second by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Smedley.
Reason being that, again, we need this on the books today.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 0421.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Grace.
And as discussed at council, this is, the city administration has requested that we extend the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. And I'll just read section one here. A coronavirus expanded family and medical leave policy for city employees impacted by COVID-19, effective January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. In accordance with the guidelines outlined in the city of Athens' expanded family and medical leave request form.
Okay. And we have a question from Councilmember Reisner. Yes.
Member Crowell, would you be kind enough to read for the public the section above, section one, the whereas's?
Absolutely. This policy will provide 80 hours of sick leave to employees impacted by COVID-19. And whereas, in order to receive said benefit, employees must be vaccinated against COVID-19 upon its availability. Thank you, Member Reisner.
Yeah, I think it's important to get that out there.
Absolutely.
Agreed. Okay. And any other comments or questions from council members or administration, or our attendees? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 521 is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an inter-fund transfer, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 0521.
Second by Councilmember Katsas.
And the reason being that we need these, again, on a, on a quick schedule, getting our funds in their proper places. I will not read through all of these separate items. We went through them at committee last week. But I will note that there are two items that were additions to this ordinance. And those are 1,000, excuse me, $15,840 to Storm Sewer Fund to cover the medical costs associated with the position we discussed of environmental coordinator. And also $100,000 from the general fund to the cemetery fund. This was accounted for in the appropriation ordinance that we've already approved, but it needs to be added by, by transfer, transfer, officially transferring this money.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Before we do the motion to approve, we do need to have the final vote on the motions to suspend. So all those.
Sorry, I'm jumping the gun here.
All those in favor suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve 0521.
And we have a second from Councilmember Claude Filter. Okay. And any questions or comments from council members, administration, or our attendees tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We'll move on to ordinance 621. And this is an ordinance amending ordinance 1522, an agreement with the Athens City Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and the City of Athens Patrol Officers and Lieutenants to correct section 24.3, uniform schedules, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 0621.
Second by Councilmember Smedley.
And the reason being there, sorry, is that this is to correct a contract that's already been accepted and approved.
Okay. So we have a motion and second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 0621.
Seconded by Councilmember Fall. Okay.
And I'll just note that the change here is in the amount of the initial issue or replacement vest for the, for the police department. The, the price has been $800 for some time now, but it was incorrectly listed, had not been updated from $650. So this, in agreement with the union, the, this is just a correction to the existing contract.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members, administration, or our attendees? If not, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 721 is an ordinance affirming the mayor's execution of an agreement with the Athens City Fire Fighters Local 3351 and Ohio Council 8, AFSMI, AFL-CIO, concerning wages and working conditions. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 0721.
Seconded by Councilmember Claude Filter.
Thank you. And again, the reason here is that this is a contract that was signed last year, but we never had official council legislation authorizing it. So we want to do that ASAP.
Thank you. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 0721.
Seconded by Councilmember Smedley. Okay.
And again, what I said is that this is a contract that has already been signed, but we missed council legislation officially authorizing it. So we must do this and then sign it retroactively.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval. Any questions or comments from council, administration, or our attendees? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. And I think those are the end of our suspensions for our first reading ordinances now. So now we'll move on with first readings. 821 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of softening salt for the water treatment plant, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. This is a very straightforward ordinance. It is to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase of softening salt for our water treatment plant. And the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $155,000 from Water Fund 740 TC200 for said purchases.
Thank you. And do we have any questions or comments? Not? We'll move on to 921. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to close streets in the uptown area for special events during the 2021 calendar year, and to change requested dates or cancel events as necessary, and is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. And as we remember back to committee session last week, Assistant Safety Director Andrew Chicky presented on this. And I want to thank him for all of the work that he did upfront to really get the, the schedule together for the, for the street closures and events that we will, that we are anticipating we might see this year. And going through the, through the list, I'm not going to rattle all the dates off, but the International Street Fair, the Plains Lions Club Cruisin is going to have three, three car shows, the Athens Brick Criterion Brew Week, the Athens Arts and Music Festival, the Joint Police Advisory Council, their barbecue happening in, in early fall. Then that moves into also their trick or treats, which are the Ayuba Uptown Trick or Treat, and then of course, the traditional one that we will see usually at the end of the, of October. And then also their holiday tree lighting in December. So we will, as we move forward, we will see which ones of these do happen. And we'll be optimistic, and hopefully we will see a return to some of, some of those events that make Athens, Athens.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, if not, we'll move on to the following two ordinances that are also related to these. This is 1021. This is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in a Designated Area. Introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. And this is just the, the suspension of our, of our code that's on the books, which would limit the ability for some of these events to happen. So this just basically suspends the noise ordinance for the events that, that need to make some noise.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Need to make noise.
Okay. We'll move on then to ordinance 1121. This is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting to Allow Vending in a Designated Area. Introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. And this is that third, that third piece of legislation in order for these, these events to, to happen correctly on, on our streets uptown.
And any comments or questions from council members, administration, or our attendees? Not? We'll move on to resolutions now. Resolution 121. And this is a resolution estimating the amount of interim monies for deposit in public depositories. Directing the treasurer to take periodic applications and to award interim deposits as monies become available. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for R0121, because we need to have this issue wrapped up by March 1st. And, and actually, we need to have these pieces done so that the law director and the treasurer has the time to determine how to proceed for that March 5, March 1 designation.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second for suspending the rules? Councilmember Katsas, okay. So all those in favor to suspend the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to accept R0121.
And a second by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. As discussed at committee, every five years, the city is required by the Ohio Revised Code to designate our public depositories. And as I said, the treasurer and the law director, or the treasurer actually, will, will send out applications to eligible banks for two different pieces, for both for interim monies as well as active funds of the city. And then the treasurer and the law director will work together to determine the designations to be made to those financial institutions that qualify. Again, we all, we have to have this process finished by March 1st, so that we can get this done in time, both this resolution and the next one, but, but this one first. Yes, Member Reisner?
I just want to clear up one, a point, or from my own education. Do the financial institutions contact the city to say, hey, I'm interested? Or does the city contact the financial institution to say, are you interested? Or is it a two-way street?
The information that I have is that the treasurer sends out applications to eligible banks. Now clearly, they're not going to send it out to every eligible bank in the country. I know that we have some local banks that we've worked with in the past that receive applications. But I do not have an answer as to how those, who receives those applications.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? From council members, administration, or the attendees? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. The next one is Resolution 221. This is a resolution declaring the intent of the city to designate the public depositories for the active funds of the city of Athens, the term for receiving applications, and the time for designation. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for R0221, for the same reasons that we need this process done by March 1st.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Claude Filter. We have a motion second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve R0221.
Okay. And a second by Councilmember Fall. Okay.
And once again, this resolution is for the active funds of the city of Athens, same issue with the public depositories. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and second. Any questions or comments? Mayor Patterson.
Just a comment that I think is good for the public to hear and understand is that under section four of this resolution, it states that the council of the city of Athens, Ohio shall meet in regular session on Monday, February 15 of 2021, and designate a depository or depositories. So in other words, it is just acknowledging that, that these are the, the depositories or potentially a singular depository. So.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And I will note, too, as discussed in committee, this is a five-year agreement. So we don't do this every year, but this would be for the period from March 1, 2021 to March 1, 2026.
Okay. And if there aren't any other questions from council members, or administration, or the attendees, then we'll have the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. We now have a one-reading resolution. And this was something that was brought to our attention by Misty Crosby, who is the executive director of the Buckeye Hills Regional Council on which Mayor Patterson serves. And we are in the midst of new funding. And so Misty has asked municipalities across the region to lend a voice of support for this assistance for the Ohio Development Services Agency Appalachian Assistance Line item. And this is a program that would also then designate some money for the Buckeye Hills Regional Council for administration of these programs. And it's, would be $7.562 million if approved. And so we're hopeful. It's provided a lot of infrastructure projects for not only Athens, but a lot of the other Appalachian counties. So it's done a lot of good in our region. And if I could have a council member make a motion, and then another council member second, we could approve this.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Crowell, seconded by Councilmember Grace. And any comments or questions? Okay, I see approval from the mayor. Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and we will get a copy of this. If, I know that Misty Crosby is in a deadline, and so that's, I think it's tomorrow that we need to, once it's signed, to send a scanned copy of this to her by email, as well as the other people we indicated. So we'll be, we'll be doing that. And we have announcements and other business. Do council members have any announcements to make? Councilmember Reisner.
Just to remind everybody that garbage, recycle, composting is delayed a day.
Thank you. I'm usually the one that's finding out when the trash cans aren't out front. Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you, President Isley. I think most of you are already aware, but I wanted to share publicly, in this venue, I will be seeking another term on counsel, although I thoroughly appreciated all, this is. Although I've thoroughly appreciated all of this experience and working with all of you, I will revert back to caring for the little one in the evening hours and reconsider council again in the future, so.
Okay.
And I welcome anyone who's interested in running to please reach out. As you've seen in the local press coverage, we do have one person who's thrown her hat in. If anyone else is interested or has any questions, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Okay. But we do still have you for another year.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes.
And I know you're going to be.
Not going anywhere anytime soon.
And I know you're going to be working hard. You've got lots of ideas already, so thank you. We now have a mayor's appointment to the Recreation Advisory Committee, the board, and Councilmember Claude Filter, do you have those?
Yes. The two people who've been recommended to join the Mayor's Advisory Board for Arts, Parks, and Recreation, on which I serve for city council, are Gregory Lavelle and Catherine Jordan.
Okay. And, yep, and Gregory is a longtime Athens resident and, and community center devotee, and Catherine is an OU faculty member in outdoor recreation, so these look like good appointments. So we have a motion for approval, and Peter, are you seconding or making a comment?
Just, just making a comment. Is, is that Greg Lavelle, who used to work at the library and also played, it was the tennis?
I think.
Player?
Tennis and pickleball.
Okay, very good, yes. Oh, that's perfect, thank you.
We definitely need pickleball represented on that board, so that's good.
Okay. And as a council member, would you like to second the motion? Okay, so seconded by Councilmember Katsas. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, unanimously approved, and we thank them for their service. And we do have an opportunity for, I want to make sure, are there any other announcements other than we will be having a committee meeting next week? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. And so of our attendees, is there anyone who would want to speak for, you can have up to three minutes, and as we say, it's for, it would be something, a topic that has not been addressed tonight. I don't see anybody's hands raised. Then we will entertain a motion to adjourn. By Councilmember Fall and seconded by Councilmember Crowell. Okay, all those in favor?